Call this meeting to an end. I pledge allegiance to the Constitution of America, and to the Constitution of the United States. The Constitution of the United States, the Constitution of the Constitution of the United States, the Constitution of the United States. The Constitution of the United States, the Constitution of the United States. The Constitution of the United States, the Constitution of the United States. The Constitution of the United States, the Constitution of the United States. The Constitution of the United States, the Constitution of the United States. The Constitution of the United States, the Constitution of the United States. The Constitution of the United States, the Constitution of the United States. The Constitution of the United States, the Constitution of the United States. The Constitution of the United States, the Constitution of the United States. The Constitution of the United States, the Constitution of the United States. The Constitution of the United States, the Constitution of the United States. The Constitution of the United States, the Constitution of the United States. The Constitution of the United States, the Constitution of the United States. The Constitution of the United States, the Constitution of the United States. The Constitution of the United States, the Constitution of the United States. The Constitution of the United States, the Constitution of the United States. The Constitution of the United States, the Constitution of the United States. The Constitution of the United States, the Constitution of the United States. The Constitution of the United States, the Constitution of the United States. The Constitution of the United States, the Constitution of the United States. The Constitution of the United States, the Constitution of the United States. The Constitution of the United States, the Constitution of the United States. The Constitution of the United States, the Constitution of the United States. The Constitution of the United States, the Constitution of the United States. The Constitution of the United States, the Constitution of the United States. The Constitution of the United States, the Constitution of the United States. The Constitution of the United States, the Constitution of the United States. The Constitution of the United States, the Constitution of the United States. The Constitution of the United States, the Constitution of the United States. The Constitution of the United States, the Constitution of the United States. The Constitution of the United States, the Constitution of the United States. The Constitution of the United States, the Constitution of the United States. The Constitution of the United States, the Constitution of the United States. The Constitution of the United States, the Constitution of the United States. The Constitution of the United States, the Constitution of the United States. The Constitution of the United States, the Constitution of the United States. The Constitution of the United States, the Constitution of the United States. The Constitution of the United States, the Constitution of the United States. The Constitution of the United States, the Constitution of the United States. The Constitution of the United States, the Constitution of the United States. The Constitution of the United States, the Constitution of the United States. The Constitution of the United States, the Constitution of the United States. The Constitution of the United States, the Constitution of the United States. The Constitution of the United States, the Constitution of the United States. The Constitution of the United States, the Constitution of the United States. The Constitution of the United States, the Constitution of the United States. The Constitution of the United States, the Constitution of the United States. The Constitution of the United States, the Constitution of the United States. The Constitution of the United States, the Constitution of the United States. The Constitution of the United States, the Constitution of the United States. The Constitution of the United States, the Constitution of the United States. The Constitution of the United States, the Constitution of the United States. The Constitution of the United States, the Constitution of the United States. The Constitution of the United States, the Constitution of the United States. The Constitution of the United States, the Constitution of the United States. The Constitution of the United States, the Constitution of the United States. The Constitution of the United States, the Constitution of the United States. The Constitution of the United States, the Constitution of the United States. The Constitution of the United States, the Constitution of the United States. The Constitution of the United States, the Constitution of the United States. The Constitution of the United States, the Constitution of the United States. The Constitution of the United States, the Constitution of the United States. The Constitution of the United States, the Constitution of the United States. The Constitution of the United States, the Constitution of the United States. The Constitution of the United States, the Constitution of the United States. The Constitution of the United States, the Constitution of the United States. The Constitution of the United States, the Constitution of the United States. The Constitution of the United States, the Constitution of the United States. The Constitution of the United States, the Constitution of the United States. The Constitution of the United States, the Constitution of the United States. The Constitution of the United States, the Constitution of the United States. The Constitution of the United States, the Constitution of the United States. The Constitution of the United States, the Constitution of the United States. The Constitution of the United States, the Constitution of the United States. The Constitution of the United States, the Constitution of the United States. The Constitution of the United States, the Constitution of the United States. The Constitution of the United States, the Constitution of the United States. The Constitution of the United States, the Constitution of the United States. The Constitution of the United States, the Constitution of the United States. The Constitution of the United States, the Constitution of the United States. The Constitution of the United States, the Constitution of the United States.[95.11][95.11][S01. The Constitution of the United States, the Constitution of the United States.[96.11][96.11][S01. The Constitution of the United States, the Constitution of the United States.[97.11][97.11][S01. The Constitution of the United States, the Constitution of the United States.[98.11][98.11][S01. The Constitution of the United States, the Constitution of the United States.[99.11][99.11][S01. The Constitution of the United States, the Constitution of the United States.[100.11][100.11][S01. The Constitution of the United States, the Constitution of the United States.[101.11][101.11][S01. The Constitution of the United States, the Constitution of the United States.[102.11][102.11][S01. The Constitution of the United States, the Constitution of the United States.[103.11][103.11][S01. The Constitution of the United States, the Constitution of the United States.[104.11][104.11][S01. The Constitution of the United States, the Constitution of the United States.[105.11][105.11][S01. The Constitution of the United States, the Constitution of the United States.[106.11][106.11][S01. The Constitution of the United States, the Constitution of the United States.[107.11][107.11][S01. The Constitution of the United States, the Constitution of the United States.[108.11][108.11][S01. The Constitution of the United States, the Constitution of the United States.[109.11][109.11][S01. The Constitution of the United States, the Constitution of the United States.[110.11][110.11][S01. The Constitution of the United States, the Constitution of the United States.[111.11][111.11][S01. The Constitution of the United States, the Constitution of the United States.[112.11][112.11][S01. The Constitution of the United States, the Constitution of the United States.[113.11][113.11][S01. The Constitution of the United States, the Constitution of the United States.[114.11][114.11][S01. The Constitution of the United States, the Constitution of the United States.[115.11][115.11][S01. The Constitution of the United States, the Constitution of the United States.[116.11][116.11][S01. The Constitution of the United States, the Constitution of the United States.[117.11][117.11][S01. The Constitution of the United States, the Constitution of the United States.[118.11][118.11][S01. The Constitution of the United States, the Constitution of the United States.[119.11][119.11][S01. The Constitution of the United States, the Constitution of the United States.[120.11][120.11][S01. The Constitution of the United States, the Constitution of the United States.[121.11][121.11][S01. The Constitution of the United States, the Constitution of the United States.[122.11][122.11][S01. The Constitution of the United States, the Constitution of the United States.[123.11][123.11][S01. The Constitution of the United States, the Constitution of the United States.[124.11][124.11][S01. The Constitution of the United States, the Constitution of the United States.[125.11][125.11][S01. The Constitution of the United States, the Constitution of the United States.[126.11][126.11][S01. The Constitution of the United States, the Constitution of the United States.[127.11][127.11][S01. The Constitution of the United States, the Constitution of the United States.[128.11][128.11][S01. The Constitution of the United States, the Constitution of the United States.[129.11][129.11][S01. The Constitution of the United States, the Constitution of the United States.[130.11][130.11][S01. The Constitution of the United States, the Constitution of the United States.[131.11][131.11][S01. The Constitution of the United States, the Constitution of the United States.[132.11][132.11][S01. The Constitution of the United States, the Constitution of the United States.[133.11][133.11][S01. The Constitution of the United States, the Constitution of the United States.[134.11][134.11][S01. The Constitution of the United States, the Constitution of the United States.[135.11][135.11][S01. The Constitution of the United States, the Constitution of the United States.[136.11][136.11][S01. The Constitution of the United States, the Constitution of the United States.[137.11][137.11][S01. The Constitution of the United States, the Constitution of the United States.[138.11][138.11][S01. The Constitution of the United States, the Constitution of the United States.[139.11][139.11][S01. The Constitution of the United States, the Constitution of the United States.[140.11][140.11][S01. The Constitution of the United States, the Constitution of the United States.[141.11][141.11][S01. The Constitution of the United States, the Constitution of the United States.[142.11][142.11][S01. The Constitution of the United States, the Constitution of the United States.[143.11][143.11][S01. The Constitution of the United States, the Constitution of the United States.[144.11][144.11][S01. The Constitution of the United States, the Constitution of the United States.[145.11][145.11][S01. The Constitution of the United States, the Constitution of the United States.[146.11][146.11][S01. The Constitution of the United States, the Constitution of the United States.[147.11][147.11][S01. The Constitution of the United States, the Constitution of the United States.[148.11][148.11][S01. The Constitution of the United States, the Constitution of the United States.[149.11][149.11][S01. The Constitution of the United States, the Constitution of the United States.[150.11][150.11][S01. The Constitution of the United States, the Constitution of the United States.[151.11][151.11][S01. The Constitution of the United States, the Constitution of the United States.[152.11][152.11][S01. The Constitution of the United States, the Constitution of the United States.[153.11][153.11][S01. The Constitution of the United States, the Constitution of the United States.[154.11][154.11][S01. The Constitution of the United States, the Constitution of the United States.[155.11][155.11][S01. The Constitution of the United States, the Constitution of the United States.[156.11][156.11][S01. The Constitution of the United States, the Constitution of the United States.[157.11][157.11][S01. The Constitution of the United States, the Constitution of the United States.[158.11][158.11][S01. The Constitution of the United States, the Constitution of the United States.[159.11][159.11][S01. The Constitution of the United States, the Constitution of the United States.[160.11][160.11][S01. The Constitution of the United States, the Constitution of the United States.[161.11][161.11][S01. The Constitution of the United States, the Constitution of the United States.[162.11][162.11][S01. The Constitution of the United States, the Constitution of the United States.[163.11][163.11][S01. The Constitution of the United States, the Constitution of the United States.[164.11][164.11][S01. The Constitution of the United States, the Constitution of the United States.[165.11][165.11][S01. The Constitution of the United States, the Constitution of the United States.[166.11][166.11][S01. The Constitution of the United States, the Constitution of the United States.[167.11][167.11][S01. The Constitution of the United States, the Constitution of the United States.[168.11][168.11][S01. The Constitution of the United States, the Constitution of the United States.[169.11][169.11][S01. The Constitution of the United States, the Constitution of the United States.[170.11][170.11][S01. The Constitution of the United States, the Constitution of the United States.[171.11][171.11][S01. The Constitution of the United States, the Constitution of the United States.[172.11][172.11][S01. The Constitution of the United States, the Constitution of the United States.[173.11][173.11][S01. The Constitution of the United States, the Constitution of the United States.[174.11][174.11][S01. The Constitution of the United States, the Constitution of the United States.[175.11][175.11][S01. The Constitution of the United States, the Constitution of the United States.[176.11][176.11][S01. The Constitution of the United States, the Constitution of the United States.[177.11][177.11][S01. The Constitution of the United States, the Constitution of the United States.[178.11][178.11][S01. The Constitution of the United States, the Constitution of the United States.[179.11][179.11][S01. The Constitution of the United States, the Constitution of the United States.[180.11][180.11][S01. The Constitution of the United States, the Constitution of the United States.[181.11][181.11][S01. The Constitution of the United States, the Constitution of the United States.[182.11][182.11][S01. The Constitution of the United States, the Constitution of the United States.[183.11][183.11][S01. The Constitution of the United States, the Constitution of the United States.[184.11][184.11][S01. The Constitution of the United States, the Constitution of the United States.[185.11][185.11][S01. The Constitution of the United States, the Constitution of the United States.[186.11][186.11][S01. The Constitution of the United States, the Constitution of the United States.[187.11][187.11][S01. The Constitution of the United States, the Constitution of the United States.[188.11][188.11][S01. The Constitution of the United States, the Constitution of the United States.[189.11][189.11][S01. The Constitution of the United States, the Constitution of the United States.[190.11][190.11][S01. The Constitution of the United States, the Constitution of the United States.[191.11][191.11][S01. The Constitution of the United States, the Constitution of the United States.[192.11][192.11][S01. The Constitution of the United States, the Constitution of the United States.[193.11][193.11][S01. The Constitution of the United States, the Constitution of the United States.[194.11][194.11][S01. The Constitution of the United States, the Constitution of the United States.[195.11][195.11][S01. The Constitution of the United States, the Constitution of the United States.[196.11][196.11][S01. The Constitution of the United States, the Constitution of the United States.[197.11][197.11][S01. The Constitution of the United States, the Constitution of the United States.[198.11][198.11][S01. The Constitution of the United States, the Constitution of the United States.[199.11][199.11][S01. The Constitution of the United States, the Constitution of the United States.[200.11][200.11][S01. The Constitution of the United States, the Constitution of the United States.[201.11][201.11][S01. The Constitution of the United States, the Constitution of the United States.[202.11][202.11][S01. The Constitution of the United States, the Constitution of the United States.[203.11][203.11][S01. The Constitution of the United States, the Constitution of the United States.[204.11][204.11][S01. The Constitution of the United States, the Constitution of the United States.[205.11][205.11][S01. The Constitution of the United States, the Constitution of the United States.[206.11][206.11][S01. The Constitution of the United States, the Constitution of the United States.[207.11][207.11][S01. The Constitution of the United States, the Constitution of the United States.[208.11][208.11][S01. The Constitution of the United States, the Constitution of the United States.[209.11][209.11][S01. The Constitution of the United States, the Constitution of the United States.[210.11][210.11][S01. The Constitution of the United States, the Constitution of the United States.[211.11][211.11][S01. The Constitution of the United States, the Constitution of the United States.[212.11][212.11][S01. The Constitution of the United States, the Constitution of the United States.[213.11][213.11][S01. The Constitution of the United States, the Constitution of the United States.[214.11][214.11][S01. The Constitution of the United States, the Constitution of the United States.[215.11][215.11][S01. The Constitution of the United States, the Constitution of the United States.[216.11][216.11][S01. The Constitution of the United States, the Constitution of the United States.[217.11][217.11][S01. The Constitution of the United States, the Constitution of the United States.[218.11][218.11][S01. The Constitution of the United States, the Constitution of the United States.[219.11][219.11][S01. The Constitution of the United States, the Constitution of the United States.[220.11][220.11][S01. The Constitution of the United States, the Constitution of the United States.[221.11][221.11][S01. The Constitution of the United States, the Constitution of the United States.[222.11][222.11][S01. The Constitution of the United States, the Constitution of the United States.[223.11][223.11][S01. The Constitution of the United States, the Constitution of the United States.[224.11][224.11][S01. The Constitution of the United States, the Constitution of the United States.[225.11][225.11][S01. The Constitution of the United States, the Constitution of the United States.[226.11][226.11][S01. The Constitution of the United States, the Constitution of the United States.[227.11][227.11][S01. The Constitution of the United States, the Constitution of the United States.[228.11][228.11][S01. The Constitution of the United States, the Constitution of the United States.[229.11][229.11][S01. The Constitution of the United States, the Constitution of the United States.[230.11][230.11][S01. The Constitution of the United States, the Constitution of the United States.[231.11][231.11][S01. The Constitution of the United States, the Constitution of the United States.[232.11][232.11][S01. The Constitution of the United States, the Constitution of the United States.[233.11][233.11][S01. The Constitution of the United States, the Constitution of the United States.[234.11][234.11][S01. The Constitution of the United States, the Constitution of the United States.[235.11][235.11][S01. The Constitution of the United States, the Constitution of the United States.[236.11][236.11][S01. The Constitution of the United States, the Constitution of the United States.[237.11][237.11][S01. The Constitution of the United States, the Constitution of the United States.[238.11][238.11][S01. The Constitution of the United States, the Constitution of the United States.[239.11][239.11][S01. The Constitution of the United States, the Constitution of the United States.[240.11][240.11][S01. The Constitution of the United States, the Constitution of the United States.[241.11][241.11][S01. The Constitution of the United States, the Constitution of the United States.[242.11][242.11][S01. The Constitution of the United States, the Constitution of the United States.[243.11][243.11][S01. The Constitution of the United States, the Constitution of the United States.[244.11][244.11][S01. The Constitution of the United States, the Constitution of the United States.[245.11][245.11][S01. The Constitution of the United States, the Constitution of the United States.[246.11][246.11][S01. The Constitution of the United States, the Constitution of the United States.[247.11][247.11][S01. The Constitution of the United States, the Constitution of the United States.[248.11][248.11][S01. The Constitution of the United States, the Constitution of the United States.[249.11][249.11][S01. The Constitution of the United States, the Constitution of the United States.[250.11][250.11][S01. The Constitution of the United States, the Constitution of the United States.[251.11][251.11][S01. The Constitution of the United States, the Constitution of the United States.[252.11][252.11][S01. The Constitution of the United States, the Constitution of the United States.[253.11][253.11][S01. The Constitution of the United States, the Constitution of the United States.[254.11][254.11][S01. The Constitution of the United States, the Constitution of the United States.[255.11][255.11][S01. The Constitution of the United States, the Constitution of the United States.[256.11][256.11][S01. The Constitution of the United States, the Constitution of the United States.[257.11][257.11][S01. The Constitution of the United States, the Constitution of the United States.[258.11][258.11][S01. The Constitution of the United States, the Constitution of the United States.[259.11][259.11][S01. The Constitution of the United States, the Constitution of the United States.[260.11][260.11][S01. The Constitution of the United States, the Constitution of the United States.[261.11][261.11][S01. The Constitution of the United States, the Constitution of the United States.[262.11][262.11][S01. The Constitution of the United States, the Constitution of the United States.[263.11][263.11][S01. The Constitution of the United States, the Constitution of the United States.[264.11][264.11][S01. The Constitution of the United States, the Constitution of the United States.[265.11][265.11][S01. The Constitution of the United States, the Constitution of the United States.[266.11][266.11][S01. The Constitution of the United States, the Constitution of the United States.[267.11][267.11][S01. The Constitution of the United States, the Constitution of the United States.[268.11][268.11][S01. The Constitution of the United States, the Constitution of the United States.[269.11][269.11][S01. The Constitution of the United States, the Constitution of the United States.[270.11][270.11][S01. The Constitution of the United States, the Constitution of the United States.[271.11][271.11][S01. The Constitution of the United States, the Constitution of the United States.[272.11][272.11][S01. The Constitution of the United States, the Constitution of the United States.[273.11][273.11][S01. The Constitution of the United States, the Constitution of the United States.[274.11][274.11][S01. The Constitution of the United States, the Constitution of the United States.[275.11][275.11][S01. The Constitution of the United States, the Constitution of the United States.[276.11][276.11][S01. The Constitution of the United States, the Constitution of the United States.[277.11][277.11][S01. The Constitution of the United States, the Constitution of the United States.[278.11][278.11][S01. The Constitution of the United States, the Constitution of the United States.[279.11][279.11][S01. The Constitution of the United States, the Constitution of the United States.[280.11][280.11][S01. The Constitution of the United States, the Constitution of the United States.[281.11][281.11][S01. The Constitution of the United States, the Constitution of the United States.[282.11][282.11][S01. The Constitution of the United States, the Constitution of the United States.[283.11][283.11][S01. The Constitution of the United States, the Constitution of the United States.[284.11][284.11][S01. The Constitution of the United States, the Constitution of the United States.[285.11][285.11][S01. The Constitution of the United States, the Constitution of the United States.[286.11][286.11][S01. The Constitution of the United States, the Constitution of the United States.[287.11][287.11][S01. The Constitution of the United States, the Constitution of the United States.[288.11][288.11][S01. The Constitution of the United States, the Constitution of the United States.[289.11][289.11][S01. The Constitution of the United States, the Constitution of the United States.[290.11][290.11][S01. The Constitution of the United States, the Constitution of the United States.[291.11][291.11][S01. The Constitution of the United States, the Constitution of the United States.[292.11][292.11][S01. The Constitution of the United States, the Constitution of the United States.[293.11][293.11][S01. The Constitution of the United States, the Constitution of the United States.[294.11][294.11][S01. The Constitution of the United States, the Constitution of the United States.[295.11][295.11][S01. The Constitution of the United States, the Constitution of the United States.[296.11][296.11][S01. The Constitution of the United States, the Constitution of the United States.[297.11][297.11][S01. The Constitution of the United States, the Constitution of the United States.[298.11][298.11][S01. The Constitution of the United States, the Constitution of the United States.[299.11][299.11][S01. The Constitution of the United States, the Constitution of the United States.[300.11][300.11][S01. The Constitution of the United States, the Constitution of the United States.[301.11][301.11][S01. The Constitution of the United States, the Constitution of the United States.[302.11][302.11][S01. The Constitution of the United States, the Constitution of the United States.[303.11][303.11][S01. The Constitution of the United States, the Constitution of the United States.[304.11][304.11][S01. The Constitution of the United States, the Constitution of the United States.[305.11][305.11][S01. The Constitution of the United States, the Constitution of the United States.[306.11][306.11][S01. The Constitution of the United States, the Constitution of the United States.[307.11][307.11][S01. The Constitution of the United States, the Constitution of the United States. The first is ordinance twenty eighteen dash zero five seven. An ordinance rescinding handicap parking restrictions in twenty four twelve High Street and twenty five twenty Walnut Street in the city of Blue Island County Cook and St. Louis.
I mean, there's a script for this ordinance. It's not Walnut, it's Union, that's wrong.
That should be twenty five twenty Union Street as opposed to twenty five twenty Walnut. Ordinance is correct. Do you have a motion? Alderman Donahue, do you have a second? Alderman here. Any questions? Roll call.
Fairwell.
Aye.
Fairwell, aye. Osling.
Aye.
Osling, aye. Thompson.
Aye.
Thompson, aye. Carr.
Aye.
Carr, aye. Pittman.
Aye.
Carr, aye. Pittman.
Aye.
Pittman, aye. Slattery.
Aye.
Slattery, aye. Poulos.
Aye.
Poulos, aye. Bellato.
Aye.
Bellato, aye. Viera.
Aye.
Viera, aye. Donahue.
Aye.
Donahue, aye. Holly.
Aye.
Holly, aye. Love my turn.
Thank you. Members of the council, just correct your cover page on that ordinance from twenty five twenty Walnut to twenty five twenty Union. The body of the ordinance is correct. Next, you have the ordinance that you needed. Second ordinance on the agenda is twenty eighteen dash oh five eight. An ordinance authorizing issuance of a, excuse me, a special use permit to Jermaine Walker to allow for the use of the banquet hall at the lower level of the old Masonic temple, which is in a C1 central area commercial district in Blue Island, Illinois. Do you have a motion? Mr. Fairwell, do you have a second? Alderman Thompson, any questions? Go ahead.
Thank you. Mayor, I know the building recently sold. Does this affect that or will they have to reapply for a new permit? Or we know, or are any owners going to kick them out? Because I heard rumors that they're making everyone vacate.
I heard the same rumors came across with gentlemen who called. I think they're looking for a new location and we gave them some location within the city of Blue Island if need be. And there's new owners, from what I understand, to be a medical office building. But that's what I heard, that they're looking for a new location in Blue Island.
So then if they apply, if they want to a new building, maybe they have to apply for another possible special use permit. This wouldn't be a linked special use.
No, for a different location?
Yeah.
Oh, they have to get a different special use, or new special use. Because they may be in a different district entirely. You're welcome. So we got a motion, we got a second. Alderman Thompson.
Yes.
Osling, second.
Fairwell.
Aye.
Fairwell, aye. Osling.
Aye.
Osling, aye. Thompson.
Aye.
Thompson, aye. Carr.
Aye.
Carr, aye. Pittman.
Aye.
Pittman, aye. Slattery.
Aye.
Slattery, aye. Poulos.
Aye.
Aye. Bellato.
Aye.
Bellato, aye. Viera.
Aye.
Viera, aye. Donahue.
Aye.
Donahue, aye. Holly.
Aye.
Holly, aye. Love my turn.
Thank you very much. The third ordinance is ordinance number twenty eighteen dash zero five nine. An ordinance discontinuing the collection of at the law on property taxes for the benefit of the city of Blue Island redevelopment project area number three after December thirty first, twenty eighteen. This particular tax increment finance district will expire on December thirtieth of twenty eighteen. So this ordinance must be passed and then submitted to the Cook County Clerk's office. Do you have a motion? Alderman Osling, do you have a second? Alderman Tompkins, any questions?
I'm sorry, I have a question. Please explain.
I'm sorry.
Please try to explain this in succinct way.
When a tax increment finance district is created, it's created for twenty-three years. And then, this district actually, the twenty-third year ended in December of twenty seventeen. However, the taxes are levied and then collected a year in arrears. So at the end of twenty eighteen, any increment, no more increment will be collected and be collected for the benefit of the city. The tax increment finance district is then expired. From that point on, twenty eighteen on, taxes levied will go to the city and all of the, any increment generated will go to the city and to all of the other taxing districts. The district is then completely finished. So we got a motion, we got a second.
Fairwell.
Aye.
Fairwell, aye. Osling.
Aye.
Osling, aye. Thompson.
Aye.
Thompson, aye. Carr.
Aye.
Carr, aye. Pittman.
Aye.
Pittman, aye. Slattery.
Aye.
Slattery, aye. Poulos.
Aye.
Poulos, aye. Bellato.
Aye.
Bellato, aye. Viera.
Aye.
Viera, aye. Donahue.
Aye.
Donahue, aye. Holly.
Aye.
Holly, aye. Love my turn.
Thank you very much. Anything else, Paul? It's all right. Thank you. Committee reports, committee vote here?
No, report, your honor. Our next meeting is supposed to be on Tuesday, November sixth, which is election day. So we'll need to reschedule that. We'll have a date announced at the next city council meeting.
Thank you. Finance committee?
Finance committee met on October second. Members present: Alderman Frosto, Alderman Holly, Alderman Thompson, Alderman Osling, absent, Alderman Vera, and Alderman Fairwell. Also present were Director Mike Marzal and Senior Accountant Janelle Hunt. No public comment. Committee reviewed and approved the following: Accounts payable for ten, ten, two thousand eighteen in the amount of three hundred eighty-nine thousand, six hundred seventy-four dollars and seventy-six cents. However, there was a manual check for workman's comp added to this for six hundred and thirty-two dollars and twenty cents, bringing the total today to three hundred ninety thousand, three hundred and six dollars and ninety-six cents. I make a motion to approve.
Do you have a motion, you got a second. Poulos, any questions? Roll call, please. Go ahead.
I'd like to amend the motion to approve all accounts payable with the exception of the two law firms in the bills payable. My only reason I have is, I just got back out of town, but I went through this and started going through it. Mike did get me the information they requested. Thank you. But that's one hundred and twenty percent over budget. Twenty percent over budget right now. And this is probably the last month on including this month's bills. I want to know if the finance committee is going to do the transfer. I think we're ten percent has to open the budget appropriation for a public hearing to move money from one account to the other. And we already passed the ten percent threshold. I wonder if there's a plan in place to handle that.
Go ahead, go ahead.
Well, maybe there is a requirement for that, but it seems a little curious to me because I was looking back at the audited financial statements for the city from the year twenty sixteen. So that was the year before this law firm was appointed. And it was when the law firm that everyone seems favorably disposed to was providing services. And find that in that year, and I'm not for overturning budgets, but in that year, the budget was four hundred and fifty thousand dollars for legal services and seven hundred and thirty-two thousand dollars were approved by this city council without any objection. So I'm just a little curious why so much attention is being drawn to this at this point. Just want to point out that this is not inconsistent with the experience we've had with the past. And I'm sure it's difficult to anticipate at the beginning of the year what legal actions the city is going to face. We've had some very significant actions, and I, the district attorney, we had to work pretty closely with our current law firm and Leslie Kennedy, and we're very impressed with their work. So I think we're getting a good value for what we're paying. Again, I'm not in favor of going over budget, but I do see that this is not uncommon experience here.
I take that point, Alderman. My point's unrelated, really. It's just about this year's budget. And if we're going to follow the procedure of opening up the budget to, the fellows were moving the money from, it's only one pot. And we went past the ten percent threshold, which when I was county clerk for four years, anytime over ten percent, county clerk says you have to reopen the budget and a public hearing. So I'd like to just remove not only all, any law firm, I think just Hinchcock or something on there also. Just remove them out of the bills payable until we can get a plan in place or tell us when a hearing is going to be or where the money is going to be moved from, from one part of the budget to the other.
Can I just ask the alderman a question?
You can ask.
By pay, you mentioned that county clerk indicated that you have to open up the budget process.
When you exceed past ten percent of the budget amount.
And under what statute are you referring? But I just want to make sure.
That's what those protocols I was always told.
Well, wait.
And I ask two-parted question, attorney. That's one part.
I just have a question.
I just want to know where the money is coming from. So until that part of the question is answered, it doesn't matter if that part is answered or not.
Art of what you appropriated, you appropriated, if I'm not mistaken, five hundred thousand dollars, give or take.
That's what it says.
And I don't know the tally or the other law firms that have been doing work for the city. But since we began our services in October of last year, which is very close to a year now, the total of expenses and fees that we have charged are three hundred, just under three hundred and eighty thousand. The average you expended in the three prior years, well, I don't want to give you an average, seven hundred and twenty-one thousand in twenty sixteen, six hundred and thirty-six thousand in twenty seventeen, and seven hundred twenty-three thousand in twenty fifteen. So we were averaging just about seven hundred thousand dollars a year. And that did not include whatever you were paying for your in-house counsel. Without looking at the appropriations, I'm just curious for those years, I'm curious, I'm just curious if you want to call this follow-up. Because our firm, if I may, I'm just asking, I'm just asking.
If you ask the same questions, all the [inaudible].
Our firm's bill for July is on the agenda. That's July. We don't ask for the legal work. We perform it as asked. We were asked to perform services for various matters. We're trying to consolidate all of the legal work that we do for the city. The city used to retain one, two, three, four, five, six, seven, eight different law firms, excuse me, nine, as well as have in-house counsel. We're trying to bring it in. We're trying to keep the cost as low as we can. But there have been things that have been put to us for handling at the request of the city. Now, this is a July bill. We don't work for nothing. We never said we would work for nothing. And I don't believe it's fair to us as the lawyers for the city to just table it. It was tabled again, it was tabled at the last meeting. There's been an entire two-week period that we could have gone through this, that you could have asked any questions you had. None were asked, none were posed to us. And I'm asking from, on an issue of fairness, that our bill for July be paid. If you wish to discuss what has yet to be before you for August or September, that's a different story. I'll be happy to discuss. But I don't believe that this is fair at this point in time. At seven twenty in the evening on the night the bill is up again for approval. If there are issues with the bill, raise the issues. But otherwise, be fair to us. We try to be fair to you folks.
And again, I'll restate to the council, my question wasn't so much about the bill. It was about where are we moving the money from one account to the other and when it's going to be clear for the council. We are under the biggest crunches of numbers from your own staff, mayor, than we have been in many years. And I just want to know where the money is coming from. So my question is not related to the past. It's related to this payable here. And I would have an answer.
Is there a motion?
I made a motion to remove law firm bills off this month's payables so the rest of the bills can get paid. Is there a second?
Is there a second, Alderman Donahue? Go ahead, go ahead.
So my question is not related to the past, it's related to this payable here. And I don't have an answer.
Is there a motion?
I made a motion to remove law firm bills off this month's payables so the rest of the bills can get paid. Is there a second?
Is there a second, Alderman Donahue? Go ahead, Alderman.
I just want to say that we were like $300,000 over last year, in 2016, and this was never discussed in finance or approved by city council either, so.
I think your pain, your point, as I go by Alderman Fairwell, I see attorney quarterback. My point's totally separate. I understand, I understand your point. But that's not what I'm asking.
Is the motion a second?
I just, I have to.
The motion is out of order, mayor. It is not on the agenda. It should have been placed on the agenda. So the motions to approve the payables were not approved.
That's fine. One last question.
The chairman of finance has asked repeatedly if these issues could be brought up to her attention so these issues can be resolved. Prior to this moment, I think the attorneys made a good case, they have worked in good faith for the city, we should pay them. And I'm certainly over to the idea that Alderman, what you suggest about, I'm going to look at our finances and that's a legitimate question, it should be answered. But I also think that the firm should be paid for the work it did months ago.
I have a question for the city attorney, unless another Alderman wants to catch it. Last council meeting, you allowed a motion to, you said ask for a motion to remove the accounts for the bills, the attorneys, and we passed the motion to pay the rest of the bills. Now you're saying it's out of order, because you're asking the council then that we got to just vote on yes or no to the bills without taking this particular bill out of the order.
Alderman Balado, I thought it would be irresponsible of this city council to not pay the health insurance, well, let me go through it, you asked a question. To not pay the health insurance premium for its employees, to not pay its electric bill, to not pay the refuse bill for picking up garbage in the city, and to walk away from paying over $500,000 dollars bills.
Attorney, last meeting, you made the exception yourself, and now you're saying we can't make the exception.
I told the mayor the motion is out of order.
So what advice are you telling the council? Can we legally do that or not? Last meeting, you were allowed to do it by your advice.
I told the mayor the motion is out of order. You shouldn't have placed it on the agenda.
So last meeting wasn't on the agenda either, but you allowed it. So what is the?
There's a motion to allow anything.
There's a motion, a second, to allow.
Well, you suggested it.
I suggested it. I did not allow anything. I don't have the ability to allow.
So you're suggesting different council tonight than last meeting.
Did you learn what I told the mayor? And you heard what I've said to you?
So the alter, he's saying last meeting what we did was wrong, and this meeting it's okay, vote against all the bills. Or vice versa.
Last meeting, you were irresponsible, Alderman.
But he accepted the last meeting by making the idea of.
There's a motion, a second. And you want to clarify what it is, council?
The motion, a second, will be to approve the accounts payable as listed.
Rocco.
The council's aware, that's voting them all, because he's not letting us take out the attorney fees, like he did at the last meeting.
Rocco. Fairwell.
Aye.
Fairwell, aye. Osling.
Aye.
Osling, aye. Thompson.
No.
Thompson, no. Carr.
No.
Carr, no. Pittman.
No.
Pittman, no. Slattery.
No.
Slattery, no. Pulos.
Aye.
Pulos, aye. Balado.
No.
Balado, no. Viera.
I say, aye. But shame on all of you. How you guys are acting. Shame on you.
Viera, aye. Donahue.
No.
Donahue, no. Holly.
Aye.
Holly, aye. Five ayes, six nays. Motion fails. Goodbye.
Mayor, please. Last week you allowed us to reconsider, even after we tried voting it down, you went to executive session, and we counted it out. We want to pay the bills. We just, Alderman asked to remove those two items.
They have asked why.
Order.
Present yourselves at our finance committee meetings when this happens. Why do you guys always have to wait until it's at city council to perform?
But, we're going to bring it up. I got, we're talking about games. I asked for copies of the bills, and I got provided redacted copies. And had to go through a whole fight, and I didn't want to fight about this anymore. But I had to go through a whole show together.
Come to our meetings.
Thank you. Go ahead.
Okay. Payroll for September 21st, 2018, in the amount of $343,419.56. Motion to approve.
Motion, we have a second. Alderman, Donahue. Any questions? Go ahead.
What was the amount of payroll?
September 21st payroll, it was 317,636. Is that correct?
317,603.76. Okay, yeah. 317,603.76.
We got a motion, we got a second. Rocco, please. Fairwell.
Aye.
Fairwell, aye. Osling.
Aye.
Osling, aye. Thompson.
Aye.
Thompson, aye. Carr.
Aye.
Carr, aye. Pittman.
Aye.
Pittman, aye. Slattery.
Aye.
Slattery, aye. Pulos. Pulos, I'm sorry, I didn't hear you say it. Pulos, aye. Balado.
Aye.
Balado, aye. Viera.
Aye.
Viera, aye. Donahue.
Aye.
Donahue, aye. Holly.
Aye.
Holly, aye. Lovemans. Thank you very much. Any else?
Chief Rita advised us, we are required to report all ambulance calls to the state of Illinois. If we do not comply with, I'm reading what Mike came out of my finance. It's been referred to your committee.
Go ahead, Cal.
If we do not comply, state could pull our ambulance service. IDPH no longer accepts paper effective June 20th, 2016. Software needed to be purchased in the amount of $12,800 for the initial staff. There was a roll call motion to approve. Alderman, Holly, yes. Thompson, yes. Brasto, no. Osling, yes. This was forwarded to public health and safety. Are you happy? Under discussion.
Please don't do that. Please don't do that.
Oh, George.
That's secondhand.
You know, this whole thing is.
Alderman.
Under discussion. 2019 SIF projects, everyone has this in their packet. Please, any questions, contact Director Marzal. Do not wait until the last minute or when we're on city council floor to perform. No further business. Meeting was adjourned. Next meeting is October 16th, East Annex, 7 o'clock.
Thank you very much. I'll count on safety.
And, your honor, these are the minutes for the meeting of September 11th. Present were Chief Marzal King, Deputy Chief Bernie Arzad, Chief Dan Rita, Alderman Kevin Donahue, Alderman Ken Pittman, Alderman Bertie Pulos, and myself. Absent was Alderman Dexter Johnson. Also in attendance was Mike Marzal and Detective Carmine Balado. Meeting was called to order at 6:05. Alderman Pulos moved to approve the minutes. Alderman Pittman seconded the motion. There were no citizens present under fire department. There was 246 EMS responses, 103 fire responses, 24 auto aid responses. Medical reimbursement services collected $43,385.2 for the month of August. Fire recovery received in August $1,688. False fire alarm fees collected in August were $160. Calls of interest, the biggest one was, of course, the Maple Tree Inn on August 23rd. It involved the Blue Island Companies, auto aid, mutual aid, and Unit 2100. There was a discussion about the shut-off valves at the Maple Tree Inn being covered over. Mike Marzal informed the committee that future builds of the Maple Tree Inn would have to take into account the gas, electric, and water lines. Under general information, union negotiations are ongoing. Under maintenance, ambulance 2162 is still out of service. Estimated repairs are $98,000. Under fire prevention, Inspector Whitlock spent a month conducting annual inspections. Under training, members completed 293.75 hours of training. A new training program is in place. Hours are not yet being generated. Under operations, the response plan changed on August 6th. Instead of running an engine and a truck, the department will be running two engines out of each firehouse. Under EMS, Chief Rita is reviewing EMS reporting software and negotiating a better price for billing. And the safer grant, the safer grant was awarded to Blue Island. We plan on hiring the three firefighters using that grant. On the police department, under administrative updates, on August 20th, recruits Guillermo Anaya and Eric Carrero were appointed as full-time police officers with the Blue Island Police Department. On August 26th, they reported for training at the Illinois State Police Academy. Their training will conclude on November 30th. Thereafter, they will each begin a 12-week field training program at the police department. Detective Delgado was selected and appointed as a team supervisor with the South suburban major crimes task force. Anthony Strezl was cleared for duty and returned to work on September 4th. He's been assigned to the detective division. Martin Robitz was reassigned to the patrol division. Our time officer, Pacera, has begun field training to help offset staffing shortages. The police department is currently operating at 31 of the 36 sworn positions. Under training, the Blue Island Police Department conducted active shooter training at Eisenhower High School. The training consisted of classroom instruction and force-on-force practicals. Detective Strezl completed training related to cultural competency. Chief King and Deputy Chief Arzad attended an executive forum on less-than-lethal force. Officers Ortega and Cisk completed training related to domestic violence and crisis intervention. Detectives Delgado and Murray attended training related to sexual assault investigations. Under injuries, Officer Chigurlo sustained an on-the-job injury on May 30th. A projected return date is unavailable. Officer Rhodes sustained an on-the-job injury to his leg on August 8th. A projected return date is unavailable. There was a total of 2,348 calls for service in August. The police department collected $31,264.13. Under calls of interest, on August 10th, three offenders, one armed with a handgun, hijacked a vehicle from a 74-year-old woman. The incident occurred at the 129 block of Page Court. No harm came to the woman, but vehicle was located at 43rd and LaSalle Street, Chicago two days later. The vehicle was processed for genetic evidence. Investigation is ongoing. On August 23rd and August 24th, Detectives Delgado and Robitz responded to a tactical deployment in Midlothian. Under recovered firearms, there were four firearms recovered in August. Under Lexi Poll, the Blue Island Police Department has begun policy updates and review. A rule update of January 2019 has been established. Deputy Chief Arzad and Sergeant Caro will be working with Lexi Poll to achieve this goal. On the passport parking, Mike Marzal explained how shortcomings in the passport parking program had been addressed, and the contract is being renegotiated. There was no health inspection report. Mark Marzal, Mike, I'm sorry, Mark, I missed the word, Mike, Mike, Mike Marzal stated that we had an interim health inspector who had since resigned. The new development manager will be hiring a new health inspector. There was no BIMR report. Under Alderman's concerns, Alderman Carr asked that the fire department include the number of fire inspections to be included in the report. Alderman Donahue asked if the MWRD agreement for building a training facility had gone through any committees before it was placed on the city council agenda. Alderman Carr asked about the cost for the $4 million liability policy required by the MWRD. Alderman Pittman asked about having some of the no-tran on red signs removed. Chief King explained that they are mandated by state law, and a discussion ensued. We had an executive session where first, police personnel matters were discussed. Our meeting was adjourned at 6:35. Our next meeting will be November 13th at 6:00 PM in the East Annex.
Thank you. Anything else?
On the agenda for tonight, there was a motion to approve a contract for the EMS software, but we tabled it during our meeting tonight.
Justice Services Committee?
Yeah, thank you, your honor. There is no formal report, but Chairman Rita wanted me to let everyone know that the next meeting is 10:23 at 6:00 PM here in the East Annex. It'll be 6:00 PM. We moved it up a half hour because of constraints.
Thank you. Judiciary Committee?
No report, your honor. We will have our next meeting on next Monday, October 15th, at 6:00 PM in the East Annex.
Thank you very much. Any other man, if you have other comments, go ahead, Alderman.
Okay. Once again, the city council has chosen not to pay our bills. I hope that this city council knows the consequences that can happen with this decision.
Thank you. Anyone else? Go ahead, Alderman.
Okay, so, I'm very angry. I'm very angry. But I do believe that this body should be respectful, and so I will try to express my anger in a respectful way. A year and a half ago, I joined this body, I was asked to join this body, and I did folks, did so gratefully, in the belief that this was a group of 14 people who were working together towards a common goal. I have been disgusted with much of what I've seen since this time. There was a vote taken shortly after I became Alderman. I voted in favor of replacing our law firm with our current law firm, and I have not